I'm gonna introduce the guy who got the job. The energy he has here tonight. You wanna introduce him?
Let the record show that a public meeting is reconvening at 7:04. Tonight, we have a special performance by Henry Elementary Vapa School, District's Visual and Performing Arts School. But first, let's have 4th grade student Yalit Guadalupe Gonzalez Hernandez lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Guadalupe. Well done. And now, Henry, 4th grade student Maisha Trujillo will play the part of Dorothy Gale and 3rd grade student Gavin Gonzalez will play the part of Toto to present "Over the Rainbow" from the play "The Wizard of Oz." This play will be shown on Henry's campus soon.
Good evening, everyone. Our play is our second annual performance of "The Wizard of Oz," and we are going to be doing our play in April. And we're not sure of the date, but it'll be after our state testing and we'll make sure that everyone knows when it is. And we'd like to invite all of you to come to the play. It's a fabulous play. The children are from 1st to 5th grade and they have our excellent performance for their age. And so tonight, I would like to present our singer, Maissa, and Toto is Gavin.
Thank you, Maisha and Gavin. And on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you to the parents and hard-working Henry staff who support our awesome students' talents. Go Hawks! Next, before we adopt the agenda, we have a couple amendments here I need to read to you. We're gonna amend contract C-13-0216 on page, reference H3 dot 1, from 5 weeks to 6 weeks, and correct the end date to read 5/10/2013. Also, we need to amend the agenda to include item J7. I'll read J7. The governing board of the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education votes for the following as delegates to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. Candidates vote no more than for six candidates. D notes incumbent Christina Cameron, Otero, Needles, California; Chuck Christie, Yacipa, Calamasa; Tommy Courtney, Lucerne Valley; Karen Gray, Silver Valley; Kathy A. Thompson, Central; Charles J., U-Holly, Chafee Joint Union High School District. And we need to amend this. We also need to get a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have two, first and a second, by O'Kelly. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a report out of closed session.
No action was taken.
Presentations. Yabora?
This is the DSAC presentation. First, we had Kathy from Eisenhower High School.
Good evening, cabinet members, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Seaborn. My name is Catherine Melendez and I'm a representative for Eisenhower High School. On March 1st, we had our build drive and our total pins were 125. Tonight, we had our Future Ego Night. This event helped parents and students to become familiar with the high school environment. We are proud to say that we had over 200 guests attend. We have started our prom elections and the competition is really tough out there. Prom will be April 27th and we are really excited to attend. Thank you.
Next, we have Jasmine, and Jasmine is also the valedictorian for Rialto High School. So let's give her a hand.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Seaborn, and members of the cabinet. My name is Jasmine Simoneau and I'm the ASB president of Rialto High School. I would like to start this presentation by saying how proud I am of Rialto High for making its first annual Battle of the Sexes Week a huge success. We finished off the games with the Sadie Hawkins Dance at Cal Skate, which was packed with over 250 students, surpassing our original goal of 100 students. And of course, like usual, the girls came out on top and I am happy to announce that the ladies were the winners of the Battle of the Sexes Week. This Friday is the first pep rally. This Friday is the first pep rally of the semester. This year's spring rally will focus on the spring sports such as baseball, softball, track, men's golf, and badminton. They're looking good out there, so watch out Ike and Carter. This rally's theme is Castle Rialto. We're excited to make this rally another success. Last week, after months of participation, we finally released this year's prom location. Prom 2013 will be held in the Extravaganza Mitten Building in Redlands, California. We are already in preparation to make this the best night for our juniors and students. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
We saved the best for last. We got Brittany from Carter.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Seaborn, cabinet members, and viewing audience. My name is Brittany Stone and I am the ASB president for Carter High School. I am here to share with you a brief summary of the exciting events that are going on at Carter. Artistic License 2013 is now open. Students let the world see their creativity through poems, through paintings, and through photography. On March 13th, the valedictorian/saluditorian reception was held in the NPR from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. We recognized our valedictorian Frances Felix and our saluditorian Kyle Wilcox. We are very proud to be honoring 29 distinguished scholars who have upheld a 4.0 and above for the last four years. Our Honorable Assembly will be held on March 14th for all students grades 9 through 12 who earned a 3.0 or higher in the fall semester. On March 15th, the Winter Sports Assembly will be held in honor of our amazing athletes who played during the winter season. I am so proud to announce our boys varsity soccer team met defeat only once in six months, going on an unbeaten streak of 29 games. Records were shattered. They ended the year with a perfect 9-0 record at home, 89 goals as a team, and achieved a triple by winning the Oak Hills Tournament, the North Orange County Classic Tournament, and the San Andreas League Championship after seven long years. And the final cap, oh, yeah, the final cap to their season was the remarkable fight they put up against amino leadership in the CIF championship game. All these championships and unbeaten run will be difficult to beat in the years ahead, but of course, not impossible. The team of 2012 and 2013 has left a legacy that will last a lifetime. Wrestling, not only was Carter CIF champions this year, they also won back-to-back San Andreas League titles to go along with the Citrus Belt titles of 2007-2008. Carter was 16-2 overall, along with having four CIF individual placers. Kevin Hope in 3rd, Vernon Willis in 4th, Octave Bro in 5th, and CIF champion Kenneth Clark in 1st. This may be the only time in Rialto history that a school has qualified four wrestlers to masters and will certainly not be the last. I am proud to say that this has been the most dominating season ever for Carter High School. The tie.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
We'd like to introduce a special person that we're working on our district now. I'll ask Mohammed to introduce him.
Thank you, Dr. Seaborn. Tonight, we have our energy specialist, Dave Moreland, with us and he officially is hired by Senior District Company. He used to be our ROTC instructor and he accepted positions and he's assigned to our districts. Officially, he's gonna start March 15th and his assignment is to cut our energy costs. And the board approved this and now he's officially on board. And here is Dave Moreland to you.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to continue to work with the district in this new capacity and I look forward to fulfilling our obligation to help you control your energy cost.
We appreciate that and welcome.
Mark Blynn.
Good evening, board, Superintendent Dr. Seaborn, viewing audience. My name is Mark Blynn. I'm the senior director of Student Services. Just wanted to give you an update. We want to thank the community for bringing in about 100 TK and key kindergarten students to preregister for next year. And we're working on a date for a Deferred Action Clinic in Rialto with the Illand Empire Youth Coalition Group. Hope to have a date on Friday for that. And just a reminder for incoming 7th graders to have their T-DAP immunizations before school starts.
Good evening, board members, President Ayala, Dr. Seaborn. My name is Gordon Leary, Chief of Safety and Security for the district. Like to give you a briefing on the comprehensive safe school plan in terms of where we are right now. As you know, March 1st of every year annually, every public school throughout California is required to submit by that deadline the revisions to their safe school plan. All of our schools have submitted those. We have a few of them that are still making some other revisions to them, but the majority have their safe school plans submitted. Along with that, what we're doing is trying to ensure that all of our schools are actively involved in what's actually in their safe school plans. More importantly, we're trying to encourage all of our administrators to work directly with their school site council, to have our parents become more directly involved and more directly informed in terms of what is going on in terms of the safe school plan, so that they are not in the dark. A lot of times, kids may come home and say that we had a drill or something today and parents might want to know more information about that. So what we're working on is providing a safety handbook to make it available in both Spanish and English to all of our parents throughout the district. What we did today at Rialto Middle School was we had an unannounced drill of a lockdown intruder on campus. The reason that we're gonna be doing this is to make sure that we bring about a more awareness on our campuses and to alleviate the feeling of anxiety, but also at the same time encourage confidence and deliberateness and decisiveness and being able to act at a moment's notice to provide the necessary supervision for our students and to safeguard the lives of everyone that's on our campus. And we'll be continuing to do that throughout the remainder of this year going into next year. Thank you.
Dan and Andy.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Seaborn. Thanks to your vision, last Saturday, we had our middle school basketball championships at Eisenhower High School. We started games at 8:00 in the morning and we were all out of there by 8:30 at night. We had championship games all the way through the morning. Throughout the day, we might've had 1,200 to 1,500 people all on one side of the Eisenhower gym. Briefly, the Casera Boys won the boys varsity championship. The Frisbee Girls won the girls championship. And the cheer competition, that was the toughest competition of the afternoon. The Casera cheerleaders won the first place. Everyone received trophies and medals for the first and second place teams. I'd like to thank the APs from each school. There were administrators from each middle school there representing, helping us out. Mr. Leary, Gordon, Chief Leary, had his security there, and of course, the Ike staff that helped us out, the custodians. But I have to tell you, board and Dr. Seaborn, so many people were coming up to me and saying what a great program we have in our middle school sports. Thank you.
Board, Superintendent Seaborn, Cabinet. Well, the elementary had our final four on Saturday at Carter High School and it was just as exciting as the middle school. You might have this on your tabletops. That's our newsletter for the March Madness in Rialto, which was the elementary tournament. We had four teams, the Morris Mountain Lions, the Kodiak Lion Cubs, the Trapped Timberwolves, and the Bemis Bobcats were our final four. And we need to thank and congratulate all the schools for getting that far. And it was an exciting day with the Kodiak Lion Cubs making a repeat of their NBA elementary championship. And it was fantastic by a capacity crowd. But just as exciting as having the kids participate was speaking to the administrators and noting that every one of those kids was a high-achieving student that was on the court. And by being involved in sports, they had grade checks and they were able to keep up on their studies as well. So not only are we giving kids an avenue to participate in athletic activity, we're also encouraging what they need to do in the classroom. So I want to thank you for your vision on that and your continuing support. Thank you.
One final announcement. Congratulations to the Eisenhower High School band, who recently were invited to participate in the London Festival of Music, April 17, 2014. And we... They're one of the select number of member schools in the United States that were invited and we're gonna do our best to help them as much as we can. Thank you.
No other comments. We'll move on to public hearing. Comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Dr. Seaborn, do we have anybody?
Yes, we do. Reverend Dennis Brown?
Absolutely.
Good evening, board members, President Ayala, Dr. Seaborn, Vice President Montez. Of course, I may be known to most of you and then if not, to some of you. I'm the Reverend Dennis Morgan Brown. I'm the Program Administrator of AIM Inc., Interprevention, meaningfully intercepting the negatives toward children. We had a music venue that we held here for about three years and of course, the funding got bad and I was asked to seek my own funding. I did that and that was bad. So I'm here to see if I could get my old job back. I come across parents of students and I say, "Oh, I remember you." And I says, "How's your child doing?" "They haven't done anything since you guys stopped." Or I get phone calls wondering, "When are we gonna start back?" So I'd like to see if I could meet with Mr. Islam and see if we can negotiate, if not the three schools, maybe at least one? Because if you'll see on those copies of those pictures, those are smiling students, very happy. I would actually notice some of them jump out of their parents' cars and literally run into the school sites where we were giving the instructions. And even bands were birthed out of our music lessons and provided... Now, some of these kids came in there and, you know, I put their fingers on the strings and I said, "I strum that." And then finally, they went boom, 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 and made a chord. You see? I think it's a depravity if they are not able or allowed to continue and I do realize budget constraints, but if there's some way possible, we can come back to the drawing board and see if we can find success in these young people for tomorrow. Learners today, leaders tomorrow. And that's basically why I'm here. My time is up. Oh, I have 57 seconds. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ayala, Dr. Seaborn, Dr. Wallace? All right?
No questions.
No questions. Well, I got all of my information in the package. Gentlemen, please peruse them and I'll look to hear from you. I've been all over the nation doing what I do best and that's presenting before people and trying to get young people to find their place in society. Thank you very much.
And we thank you.
Sabina Glover.
Good afternoon to the board members, employees here from Rialto Middle School, high schools, elementary schools. My name is Sabina Glover. Some of you may know me. I used to work in this district for about eight years. Mr. Seaborn probably saw my son on Saturday. He was one of the ones hitting those three points at the game. Rialto Middle School winning the championship. I stand before you today because I'm also a teacher, but I have a son that goes here to one of your schools, which is Casera Middle School. My whole point of me standing here today is to make sure that my son continues to seize the quality education that I know that this district is capable of making sure that he receives. And the reason why I say that is because my son has become withdrawn to an extent of wanting to get up to go to school. And some of you may say, "Well, why is that, Ms. Glover?" Well, just based on some of the things that he has basically encountered since his tour in middle school. I stand here before you today because I want to make sure that teachers are basically held accountable for the things that they are instilling in our kids when they teach them. For my son to be told that kids deserve F's when they come to school, it's not acceptable to me as a parent, as well as an educator. To allow teachers to use profanity to the point to where it has my son's ego crushed, knowing, "Why would someone say those things to me, Mom, and I'm a student?" So these are some of the things that I kind of want to bring to your attention, because not just me as a parent, there's a lot of us as parents at this same school that are having a lot of these issues. Grades. My son is being flunked because he's missing one or two homework assignments. I don't understand that, where he'll have 100% in everything else. Not able to make up missing homework because he was sick out of week with pneumonia. I've never been told that my kid can never make up any type of work. So the only thing that I'm saying, standing here as a teacher, I want us to be able to instill into our kids a good work ethic, but at the same time, make sure that we as educators are making sure that our students are getting this in the classroom. It's not just in the classroom, it goes from the classroom to the home. The only thing that I'm saying is that I don't want to lose my son. My son is a good kid. He has advanced on all of his CST scores. So I don't want a lot of the negativity that he's experiencing at the middle school and the classrooms to linger on as he becomes a young man as he goes into high school. Thank you.
Paula Bailey.
Wow, it's been a little while since I've been up here. Good evening, Superintendent, board members, viewing audience and cabinet. I'm coming for you to give you great news. On the 5th of this month, we had our second parent training, part of the Special Ed Advisory Committee. Our training session, it was performed by Colleen Mealan. I'm sorry. Our training session, it was performed by Colleen Mealan, I'm sorry, Malin, from our Sopa, and it was absolutely wonderful. We had a great turnout in the morning. Over 25 parents had attended, and in the evening, we had about another 20 parents. So it's awesome that we're all working together to help our students go forward, and I just want to let you know how great it went. And I'd like to give a special thank you to Carter High School because they provided the facility for us, which was absolutely wonderful and very helpful. Mr. Gutierrez made sure everything was where it needed to be, and we had everything that we needed. Thank you.
Next, we have comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak to any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Dr. Wallace?
We are not.
Okay. No comments. Next, we have public hearing. Pursuant to the requirements of the governmental code and the Board policy, the initial contract proposal submitted by the Rialto Education Association for an agreement between REA, Board of Education, and the Rialto Unified School District is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Reference C. 3.1-2. Next, we have public information and correspondence under Section D. Number one, Williams Inspection Reports 2012/2013. Reference D. 1.1, followed by point, Item Two. The following schools will hold their open house on Thursday, March 14, 2013. Bear with me here. So we have Boyd Elementary between 4:00 and 5:30 p.m., Casey Elementary between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., Curtis Elementary between 3:00 and 4:00 p.m., Dahlahan Elementary between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m., Garcia Elementary between 5:00 and 6:30 p.m., Henry Elementary between 5:00 and 6:30 p.m., Morgan Elementary between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., Myers Elementary, 1:30 through 3:00 p.m., Preston Elementary, 4:30 through 6:00 p.m., Simpson Elementary, 5:00 through 6:00 p.m., Werner Elementary, 5:00 through 7:00 p.m. Item Three, the Knowledge Bowl, with six, seventh, and eighth grade students participating, will take place at Frisbee Middle School on Saturday, March 16, 2013, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is exciting. Spring recess is from Monday, March 18 through Friday, March 29. As a reminder, Item Five, we have the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, March 27, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Next, we have the Consent Calendar Action Section. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the Board considers the motion unless the members of the Board, the administrative staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to move?
So move.
Do we have a second? We're looking for references E. through I.
I second, and I have a question on G. 1.
G. 1?
Yes.
Please.
The third paragraph, transportation will be via student-parent carpool. Attendees will either camp overnight at Ukiper Regional Park or provide their own transportation home each day. Camping equipment will be provided by individual students. Registration, park entry fees, campsites, and meals will be paid through West Valley Water District Funds. I have a question about the transportation. I know it said via student-parent carpool, and that they will either provide their own transportation home each day. That's too vague. Are we going to allow students to transport themselves, riding with other students, or how is this going to be governed on this trip?
Mr. Castillo? Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Superintendent Seabron. The trip is one that they've taken through the Mesa Program, and I see the concern regarding the students driving. What I will do is take it back and have them put it in more detail, exactly what that entails.
Yes, it's too vague because we don't understand if students will be driving themselves, are they, are, will they be taking other students' cars? It's too vague, and we don't want anything to happen.
Absolutely. I'll have them rewrite it.
Thank you.
And I have a question on H. 3.
H. 3.
That's your contract.
Please.
I have a question about the contracts for American Appraisal and Dempsey, Philiger and Associates. I don't understand what a valuation study is and how it will benefit us to have these studies done.
The first one, the American Appraisal, is required by the Governmental Accounting Standard Board 34. We have to do a study to, do the study to reconcile and record it our fixed asset toward the districts. And this is required by the, again, under the Governmental Accounting Standard Board 34. So American Appraisal is, has done seven years ago. District has done the study. Physically, they're going to go count every inventory we have in the district, get the call fixed asset under GASB 43. And then we reconcile, and that need to be reported as a district record to our financial audit, not to the audit. So this is a requirement by the state, so under, they call GASB 34.
How often is this done?
Generally, you expect to do it every three to five years, you know? If you maintain a good record, you don't have to do it every year. It's three to five years. And we have done it last time, it was a little over seven years, so it's overdue.
Okay, and the other one, the actuarial valuation of the district's retiree health insurance program. What's that about?
Yeah, this one, again, under Governmental Accounting Standard Board 43/45. It's required by law to reassess our unfunded liability for our retiree health benefit. It's required every two years, we have to do this, and to bring, reassess what is the potential liability for the districts based on the current and potential retiree who's currently drawing the benefit to our program. So the both of them is a requirement.
Quite a difference in price.
You're correct. They're two different scope, and one is very lengthy. They have to do, physically go every campus, every location, every, we have to physically look for the property.
Are we talking equipment and everything? They're going to count every computer? They're going to count every television? They're going to count?
Anything over $500 value.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so the way I understand it, we're going to pull G. 1, come back to it after it's revised, and we'll go ahead and vote on H. 3 as written. So can we have a...
We have a vote.
Okay. Can we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And we have a student preferential vote. We have an aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have a discussion action items. Discussion act, action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. We're looking at items reference J. through L. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a question on J. 1 and J. 4.
Okay. J. 1?
On J. 1, we are amending that resolution as we voted to do last time, but on the bottom of that amendment, we have, it says that this resolution, and then it says, "And the attached 403B service agreement," and those words are crossed out, and the attached, so does this mean we're not adopting the service agreement, or?
The Board, you're only correcting the resolutions, you're amending the resolutions. The service agreement remains same through the credit union, so there's no amendment to the service agreement.
Okay. And on J. 4, the first...
Can I, before we move, can I ask about J. 1?
I'm sure. I'm sorry.
What is the, what is the benefit of staying with this program with the current providers of the service as opposed to potentially looking for other service providers?
The provider has been selected by the County Superintendent of Schools. The process, we have to choose that the credit union is the third-party administrator of the program. So we, we as a school district, and if our employees choose to participate in the program, we have to go through that process. So it is not up to us to select someone else to be a third-party administrator, and this has been in place for many years.
And just, and just, I just want to make sure you had time to review this resolution and make sure the way we adopt it tonight, if we adopt it tonight, it keeps us in the clear.
You're correct. If you see the things I struck through from the previous adoption to tonight, which you have, Board, and I struck through things you have concerned, things concerns me also. So it is, it is a clean and as, it's a crystal clear.
Now, I don't remember, I remember asking, I don't remember the answer as to why it was, why it was presented this way.
Again, I can't answer that I wasn't here, but it must be of some purpose at the time, but I can't...
Perhaps somebody that was here can answer?
If Dr. Wallace signed it, maybe he...
Perhaps Dr. Wallace could answer?
You know Dr. about this? You don't have a knowledge of that.
You signed it.
You signed it.
You signed the contract.
I would have to go back and look at it.
Where is the contract? Where is the...
It's on page...
Well, they don't have the, they don't have to sign.
Yeah, it's on J., it's on J. 1.1.
There's no signature on there. There's nothing to say he signed it.
Oh, you don't recall it?
I don't even recall this. I'm sorry.
Board, may I clarify? Adopting the resolution was not a problem. The, the, the part of the language on that resolutions you have concerned, that was, that's why it returned back to the Board for correction or amendment. So resolutions require, Board has to adopt a resolution in order to, in order to district and employees participate in the program. So adopting the resolution is not, is not a concern or issue, because you cannot participate in the program without Governing Board adapting their resolutions.
But that's not the problem we had with the resolution.
You're correct. You had some concern on the body of that resolutions.
For clarification, transparency purposes, can you explain?
What was the concern?
Yeah.
Well, the concern on the resolutions is speak for that Governing Board authorized superintendent or delegate authority to do an employer contributions to selective employees. I think that's a concern you expressed at the last time. So by, after I reviewed this resolutions and Board, you asked me directly, "Have I seen this type of resolutions adopted by the Governing Board?" My answer was no. So with that, I, I recommend that we need to amend this resolution to ensure that the language is not there anymore. So by ending tonight, you close that door means there's no employer contributions can be, can be made under these resolutions.
On behalf?
On behalf of any employee.
From the, from district?
From the districts.
I, I just would like to, for clarification, who presented this resolution?
If I recall, the document I pulled, it was presented by the interim Assistant Superintendent of Business at that time, Dr. Philly, Phil Ervey. And he was interim in my positions at that time.
Question?
For clarification of the public, then, Item 2, reference J. 1.1. Does this include other employees other than the ones stated? Include employees who normally work less than 20 hours per week? Include employees whose salary reduction would not exceed $200 per year? Exclude employees who are students enrolled and regularly attend classes of the employer? Are there others? Because I think that the concern really comes down to, is this giving favoritism to those who are working 40 hours? And in administration, it always seems to be the gist of the questions. Looking for clarification, please.
And this, this is a guideline of the participation of the program and the 403B plan. It's called the 403B plan under, the plan guideline is that which employee or employee can participate in the program. So this is not our rule, it is a program guideline.
So, so I understand, then, these are the employees that are allowed to participate?
You're correct.
Okay.
All district employees are allowed to participate in the TSA. Our only concern had been with the part on employer contributions and the, and the concern had come about because in talking to companies that provide this TSA service, we had been told that that is a clause that is, or a provision that is avoided and not included in these agreements. And so our concern is that if it was included, there has to have been a reason.
Again, I, honestly, my response to it, I don't know the reason because I was not the person prepared this.
I just would like some, thank you, Muhammad. I just would like some clarification. Dr. Seabron or Dr. Wallace, do either one of you guys recall what was the reasoning behind this resolution?
No.
No?
Okay. Okay, and on J. 4, first thing, and it says at the bottom page, 1 of 1, so I know that doesn't help you find it, but it's on the estimated actuals. What are indirect costs? And, and there's a rate used there. So is this some kind of an interest rate? It's called an indirect cost?
The indirect cost is the method that we arrive to the, how we report, spend our, every dollar we receive. There's competitions to the state program drive the rate. So it's not that we can establish a rate, any rate one. It is how we spend every dollar we receive through state, federal, and local funding sources. So, and that's indirect cost rate established, and we charge those rate to the categorical program because, like in my position, superintendent position cannot be direct cost to the example Title I program, because as a superintendent, he oversee all program. He supervise every one of us. So as a result, we cannot direct charge to the program draw, pay superintendent salary we call indirect cost. Because Dr. Seabron does, has oversight responsibility and administrative responsibility to all district program. So indirect cost is established rate authorized by state, all federal state program to charge to the program as, as being oversight, since we cannot charge direct. Sure.
In other words, for every federal and state categorical program the district gets, the district can keep a small percentage for indirect costs that's used to administer the program.
Okay. So the indirect costs are money that the district actually got to keep, not money that the district... money that the district paid out? We?
The indirect cost, what it does to us, it, since you are not charging my salary or Dr. Seabrook's salary, because we are district overall as an administrator, so we apply the percentage established rate to, and the money we charge to the program, it offset our unrestricted general fund expenditures, it is offset to the general fund, and it charged to the categorical program, because we charge as indirect cost.
So if we have this $8 million expenditure here, and the indirect costs were $584,000, that means $584,000 came out of categoricals?
Yes.
Out of the 8 million?
That's correct, and, and that offset our total expenditure reduced by that amount.
Okay, and who determines the rate?
Again, it is a state program, when we produce the financial report and represent to the state, that's their system and program generate the rate, we through our system, through their system.
Well, there's a great variation, it's as low as 2% and as high as 7.27.
Yes, some program is given a pre-established rate by the federal or state program, such as nutrition program, they have established rate. So we have to use that rate, whichever, whichever is lower. Some of the program, they don't have a rate established, we use the rate we establish to the, to the system, that's the rate we establish. So there's a different percentages applied to different program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board President, I would just like to ask that we vote separately.
Oh, I did have one.
We vote separately for?
J. 1?
No, J. 4, if that's okay.
I am sorry, I had one more concern, Mohammed.
Sure.
How can we certify that the district will need, will meet its financial obligations for this year and the next two years based upon current projections if most of the budget reductions that have been proposed require negotiations? And in the county's response to the first interim financial report, it states, "Only expenditure reductions that do not require negotiations can be included in the second interim financial report, multi-year projection." If the district board is not able to implement the components of the plan, then a qualified certification would be applicable with the second interim financial report. So, we haven't even started negotiating these items for our multi-year projections, but we're asking for a positive certification, so I'm confused.
The way we present this report tonight for, as a positive certification board with the adoption of the resolutions on the February 26 board meeting, the resolution, you recall, there's a two-part, one is called negotiable and is non-negotiable. So we, we build that non-negotiable elements as a part of our towards our fiscal solvency in order to certify as a positive certification. So county school looking for current fiscal year, next fiscal year, and, and subsequent year. So, bridging that numbers where we present to you and you adopt as the resolutions, we will be, we are able to present to you as a positive certification. If we did not adopt the resolution at the last board meeting, we could not do this today. We potentially present you as a qualified and negative certifications.
But are we meeting the criteria set forth by the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, we have to.
Okay.
And, and you will receive after, tonight, the Board, you put this, this report, you will get their review, how we present that information, and later will be issued to the Board and to the districts.
Okay.
Once we file this, after, it is due to the county on the 15th. So after tonight, we will certify with your adoptions, and we'll save this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Montes, are you satisfied with that response?
Yes.
Therefore, if everyone's satisfied, we'll just, we have a first and a second. J. 1, I believe, needs amendment, so we can probably, probably pull J. 1?
No, J. 1 is the amendment, it's good to go.
You're good to go?
Mm-hmm.
No, okay. No objections? Okay, and then we're okay with J. 4? It's time-sensitive material, we can't hold the train up. Okay, so, we have a first and a second, we've had our discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of J. 4.
So we have four ayes and one nay. Next, we have new business. Discussion, comments?
I'd like to discuss something on the next board agenda. Find out whether the Board still has cellphones. We shouldn't. And I gave mine up a couple of years ago, so I think it's only appropriate under circumstances, financial circumstances, we discuss the Board should not, or should, depending on what the vote is.
Any other comments on cellphones?
I don't have a district phone.
I think, I just want to call point of order with all due respect, we do have an item for new business, perhaps it'd be good to start with the item first for new business?
Do you have any objection to that?
None at all.
I believe, since we are operating in a deficit, that we need a complete and thorough, detailed audit to know where we stand. We cannot move forward unless we know, we have a complete picture of how we got here. There's no risk involved in conducting this audit, it simply is a tool to provide meaningful information to make the best decisions we can for our students. The taxpayers of this town put a great deal of trust in us when they elected us to do the right thing and to represent their students well. In good faith and conscience, I feel it's every board member's responsibility to exercise the community's trust by calling for this independent audit, so we can be fiscally responsible board members and make sure that we never have the worries we're having now again. So I would like to place this item as a discussion action item on the next agenda.
I would like to make a proposal. Mohammed, Dr. Seabrook, could you guys, let me first say that, perhaps a A through Z thorough of every program audit might be costly. I would like to propose that if the Board determines that, you know, an A through Z audit is going to be a hardship right now, I'd like to also propose that we consider targeted, specific audit, perhaps we could start?
Point of order. We're starting discussion on it, aren't we? Shouldn't that wait till it's actually on the agenda?
Okay, so then, then let me just, let me just clarify myself. I'd like for the Board Secretary and our Assistant Superintendent, or Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to find out what the cost would be of a thorough A through Z audit, a full program audit, for Board consideration, like Nancy said. And I would also like to, as opposed to a shotgun approach, I would like to know what the cost would be for an audit just specifically for one particular area of concern to me. And that would be, and I'm assuming for one particular area, it'd be less costly, I'd like a third-party auditor to come in and take a look at some of the contracts that were presented and approved during the time that we had this person that presented the bad resolution that we just amended not too long ago. I'm not going to say the person's name, but we all know who that person was, I believe the title was interim assistant superintendent of business services at the time. I know that that person had a few contracts, and I would like, I would like for an independent audit to report directly to the Board, take a thorough look at the, what we were billed, and, and the reason why, is because I don't blame any staff members for this, I think maybe an audit of this, of these services that were provided to us, I have reason to believe we might have been overcharged. So that's what I'd like to propose, aside from the thorough A through Z audit. Could you guys look at doing something like that for the next board meeting?
This continued discussion, any other board member, any comments this time?
Only that it should wait.
It was asked to be placed on the agenda, I think that's what we need to do, place it on the agenda, and all discussions will follow.
Yes, that's the direction we have to go. Once the agenda, whatever direction Board give us, we'll follow.
And I would like to make a comment, too. Right now, we have time-sensitive material, reports that have to be turned in to the county, and I'm not saying that this is not an unreasonable request, but if, I think the timing could be postponed, perhaps placed on the agenda after we have our report submitted to the county. I think that would be prudent to do that, and perhaps maybe even wait for the May revision of the budget. And, because also, keep in mind, audits do cost money, and I'm guessing an audit of this nature would cost us, maybe for some, doesn't, don't seem like much, but probably costs us another teacher's job. And for, for right now, I just think we could hold off, but there's five of us up here, and if we're going to take a vote to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I would vote and make the motion to postpone it till after the May revision.
Is that a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, point of order, we don't need a motion and a second and a vote to place an agenda item on the, any agenda, any member of the public for that matter can, at any time have an item placed on the agenda for Board discussion and consideration, so.
We can place it on the agenda, Vice President, and we can discuss it, and basically, you'll hear again what you probably heard tonight. If there are no other questions, can, can we move? Or, we had some comments here on cellphones, are we done with item 1 on new business?
There was a motion on the floor, we didn't complete that motion.
We need to put it on the agenda, and we'll discuss the item, so.
On the cellphones, I just wanted to add that to a future agenda, that's something I think we could cut easily.
Okay, any discussion?
How many board members have cellphones?
No.
I don't.
Not going to be an issue.
It's not an issue then.
Point, point of order, are we interrogating board members now, or what are we doing here, I mean, we're on new business.
I'm just adding it to a future agenda.
Oh, I'll answer the question, I have a cellphone from the district, but so does the superintendent and all the other administrators, and a lot of people in the district. I'm a board member, I was elected to represent the people of this community, I think a cellphone for a board member is justified, but I have no problem giving it back, because I give out my personal number, too, in case anybody wants to reach me there. But, you know, I don't understand, you know, where everybody's going with this, but I have no problem giving back my cellphone, maybe we should ask that everybody that's provided with a district cellphone, give it back.
That's something to look at, once it's on the agenda.
Okay, any other comments on cellphones? So, as I understand it, we're going to be placing two items on the agenda, cellphones, and we'll, we'll discuss the report, whether or not we want to move forward. Any other comments? None, then we move on. Comments from members of the Board of Education? Sabora?
I'm just glad Ms. Foot was able to stay for the rest of the meeting. I like to say, thank you, Ms. Foot, for everything that she is doing as a principal at Carter High School. She's everywhere, like at every competition, she will leave the next, and she will show up, I'd be like, where did she come from? So, thank you, Ms. Foot, we appreciate it.
Ms. Gilbert?
Oh, thank you, thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Bragg for the principal of Henry Elementary and the staff for giving us the hospitality to be here at Henry this evening. And Sabora, I would like to agree with you about Ms. Foot. I saw her at 7 o'clock this morning for Student of the Month, and she's still here tonight with me again, so she's doing a great job, so we want to thank you. And I, I did attend Student of the Month this morning with the Kiwanis Club, and every second Wednesday of the month, we honor excellent students from Carter and Eisenhower High School, and I thought I saw Mr. Sanchez back there also, but he was also at the Student of the Month program. Last Friday was Read Across America, and I had the honor of going to Myers Elementary, and Ms. O'Kelly and Mr. Montez were also there. It's so special when you get an opportunity to read to the students, and I had a kindergarten class, so that was fun. And when I left Myers, I also went to Werner Elementary and had another kindergarten class. So that's my, has been my activities for this week, and I would also like to congratulate the middle school and elementary sports programs, you're doing an excellent job, and, and congratulations to Kodiak for the second time being champions. Thank you, that's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Next, we have Board Member O'Kelly.
Yeah, at first, I wanted to talk about something that disturbed me, I had some calls that after our last board meeting, which was held at the district office the Sunday following that, typically, they replay that board meeting on the Rialto channel, and that board meeting was not replayed, the one from Boyd was played, I guess, for a second time. I don't know what happened there, but, you know, the community does watch, and they are upset, and they want to see what is going on at the board meetings if they are unable to attend. There was also another community member that asked for a CD of the last board meeting, or last two or three board meetings, I guess, because she'd been unable to attend, and the one for that particular board meeting was a blank disc. So I don't know what's going on, but we are going to provide this community with transparency and openness, and make sure that they know everything that's going on that, for our school district. I also, as Joanne said, had the honor of attending the Read Across America Day at Myers Elementary, which coincided with Dr. Seuss's birthday, so Myers put on an outstanding celebration, complete with Dr. Seuss costumes, hats, and T-shirts, and they invited a large number of people to read to the students, I was able to read to two second-grade classes, and it was an incredible amount of fun, I really had a wonderful, wonderful time, and hope I get invited back every year. So, big shout-out to Principal Kathy Knowles and the staff of Myers Elementary for a wonderful event. So, big shout-out to Principal Kathy Knowles and the staff of Myers Elementary for a wonderful event. I also visited Boyd, Bemis, Dunn, Henry, Kelly, and Preston Elementary Schools. And I want to tell you, it's just extremely uplifting to go into classrooms and see the extraordinary teaching and learning that is going on in classrooms. I know when I was a principal, that was my getaway. I had to go into certain classrooms and just sit there and take a deep breath and say, yes, this is good. So when I get out and visit these schools, it's just a reaffirmation of the things we know that are going on. Our hard-working teachers are doing their best with our students, and we are extremely grateful for, to everyone for the job they are doing. I also, on Tuesday, March 5th, I attended the State of Education address by County Superintendent Gary Thomas. Found that extremely interesting and informative for everyone, and I was very proud that as county superintendent, he managed to fund the Avid program even when Avid funding was going to be cut, because the Avid program is a critical and excellent program for our students, and I don't ever want to lose that, hopefully. And kudos to Board President Joe Ayala and Board Vice President Edgar Montes, as well as the rest of the committee who planned the Honoring Joe Baca event on March 7th. It was a wonderful celebration of a man who has done so much for our community and had a wonderful time. And with a name like, last name like O'Kelly, I have to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day this Sunday, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Next, we have Clerk of the Board, Joe Martinez.
Thank you, President Ayala. You know, everything that the board does and says and all the concerns really come down to doing the best for the students and the best for the community. When funding is, is cut as severely as it is now, the only solace I personally take is knowing that we are still trying to maintain the best we can for our students. It's going to come, you know, right on the heels of some of the folks we see here. They're going to be impacted by workload or, you know, something, a notice. Some of you may, some of you who watch this, working for the district may. My heart goes out to you. None of the board members wishes to do this, but it falls to us to make those decisions and to continue education in Rialto for the best of the students. And my heart is heavy. It really weighs heavily on, on the nights that each board member spends, because we care for each one of you, and we care for our community and we care for our students. If it were up to me, you know, a simple, you know, 10.2% across the board would solve it and everybody would remain working, but that's up to negotiation. And, you know, it's just not that easy. So we are working on it. We are going to do the best with the best intentions. None of it's personal, but I get very irritated and take it personal when the money is taken away from Rialto by Sacramento and Washington. I know they're feeling the same, same way and the same sleepless nights, but I don't know. If I were to stand on the side, I'd be sitting out there with you, and I am in spirit, so, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Martinez. Next, we have Vice President of the Board Edgar Montes.
Thank you, President Ayala. Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. I, first of all, I'd like to thank Principal Bragg for welcoming us here today. You know, not only do I have two boys in this district, but I've got, if anyone attended my swearing two years ago, I've got hundreds and hundreds of relatives all throughout the island empire, and I do have some relatives that come to your school, and their parents are very happy for all the hard work you've done over the years here at this school. So thank you, on behalf of my family. I just want to touch on a few things. I want to congratulate again Carter's High School's wrestling CIF championship. I think it's awesome, and I hope that, you know, wrestling starts getting a little bit more attention as much as baseball and football and basketball. They deserve it. I do want to say, I do want to thank Mark Blaine also for working on bringing some deferred action clinics to Rialto. I think we have a lot of people in the community, a lot of our students in this community that can benefit from President Obama's Deferred Actions Program. So thank you, Mark Blaine, for working on that. I do want to thank our security chief and our security staff for doing a wonderful job. As a board member, I want to congratulate you guys. As a parent, I do have one concern. I think unannounced drills might be a little scary for some people. I was not aware, as a board member, that we were going to have any drills today at any of our schools. I think it's important for board members to be informed. If we're going to have any drills at any of our schools, elementary, middle, or eyes. I actually found out through one of my nieces at Rialto Middle School. She called me. Her friend had a cellphone. She said, "Teal, there's a lockdown at my school." I said, "Oh, no," because I thought to myself, "Why is there a lockdown and I don't know about it?" If it would have been a drill, I would have known about it, because I'm a board member. So rather than drive to the school and find out what's going on, I called the district office, and they said, "Mr. Montes, don't worry about it. It's a drill." I said, "Jesus, I would have appreciated a call to let me know that it was going to happen." As a parent, I got, I did get an automated call as a parent. I guess an automated call went out to parents afterwards, but I think those automated calls would have been handy had they came in before the drill took place. And I just want to say that much, but thank you, guys. I'm sure the drill went really well. I haven't spoken to my boys about it yet, but my niece was a little shaken up, and she's okay. I do want to thank Reverend Brown also for the few years that he's been able to provide free music lessons to our students. Again, extra costs are very, very hard for the board to consider at this time, so that's something that Dr. Sebram and the cabinet and the board would have to consider down the road. Regarding the parent that came here with some concerns, I want to thank her for coming and having the courage to speak. I think any concerns of any parents at any schools should be looked at, should be taken seriously. You know, we owe it to our communities. We might not always agree on the basis of the concerns, but we still have to take a look at them because it's our job. I do want to also say that, I want to thank Dr. Sebram, Dr. Wallace, the board members that were able to make it to the salute to Joe Baca that was held March 7th at Rialto High School. It was, it was a very small event, but it was a very beautiful event, because it wasn't a political event to begin with. It wasn't supposed to be something huge, but it was nice. Our district decided to honor a man who has dedicated many, many years to public service. And after living in Rialto for 30 years and putting all his children through our schools, the least we could do is thank him, and that's what we did. And it was done by donations, committee raised funds, all through donated monies, so no tax dollars were used for the event. And then last but not least, I just want to say, we owe it to our employees, we owe it to our community to be transparent. Transparency should be our number one, one of our main goals as a governing body. And I don't see how picking and choosing what we want to find out or look into, or for the community to know how that, how we can be very transparent. I understand people have concerns regarding audits being asked for, audits being looked into. All I could say is that anyone who thinks that an audit, or calling for an audit is a witch hunt, I think they might be worried about some stuff, but I know that that's not the case with any of the people that we work with in our cabinet and our superintendent. So I just want to assure the public that regardless of whichever way, whichever direction we go with an audit or not for our district, we just want to assure you that we're trying to do the best that we can. And various board members do want to put transparency on the forefront on the way we conduct business here. And with that, thank you, Board President. Gracias.
Well, thank you, Vice President Montes. Want to reiterate, this is a good board, okay? And it's okay to disagree. Just the way you act your business with your families and your business. You're not going to agree on everything, but at the end of the venture, you shake hands and you get ready for another challenge. I also want to share, I attended a few events also, and I was with the D-LAG parents, and it was an excellent report, I might say, by Dan Sosa. I compliment you on the thorough report. And I want to go public with just a few comments on that report. The common core values that all schools are going to be based with, the bar is being raised, not lowered. And so when you challenge more kids, staff to raise that bar, there's always a price to pay. Unfortunately, the people making the decisions for us are not in these classrooms. And so, but we have to abide by them, and we'll be professional. We will be proactive. We're not going to sit here and just complain. We're going to do our best to meet those requirements. But to do that, we still need guidance. So, and that requires professionalism and staff, and staffing. And it's coming at a time where it's difficult, because we're asked to do more with less. Here we go again. But I am confident, because of the leadership we have here at this district, that we'll overcome these challenges. And we're looking at cellphones now. We're looking at reducing audits. We're doing whatever we can to reduce costs, so that we can get ready for these challenges right around the corner. Went to Dad's night, and I got to give Mr. Winton, I don't see him, but I got to give him kudos, too, because there he is, right there, nice and quiet and humble. And he did a great job with the parents, and his message was loud and clear. You want your child to succeed, there's many ways to do it. But I guarantee you, and he said it again, I guarantee you, if you back up your child like you're here tonight, your son and, well, or daughter will succeed. And you're so right, because when a child knows that they are loved, you can't give them anything better than that. And you know what? With that, that's a good way to close, because you know what? We care, and we love everybody in this district, and we're going to keep moving forward. And remember, it's okay to disagree, but I'll leave with this message. It's not what you say to people, it's how you say it. Thank you so much, and with that in mind, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And I second.
And we have a second? And we have a preferential vote by our student board member?
Aye.
Aye? All in, aye? Meeting adjourned.